Satisfied with what? Okay. I wasn't here the last, but I read through, so I don't know if there's any corrections, anything to be made, Mr. Monti.
It looks pretty much like what we did. I make, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as they have been distributed.
Mr. Monti made a motion. Can we get a second?
I second.
Commissioner.
Reddick.
Reddick, thank you. Commissioner Reddick seconded. Motion has been made and second. Are there any discussion amendments that need to be made? Okay, none, none need to be made, I guess. All in favor of the minutes being approved as published, indicate by saying aye.
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 Ms. Denise connected in.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Like sign. The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have the finance report.
Good evening. I will be covering the financial report ending October thirty first, twenty twenty two. Beginning with Trent Court, reading from left to right, total operating revenue, nine hundred thirty one thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars. Ross Grant, fifteen thousand, nine hundred fourteen dollars. New Bern Towers, seven hundred sixty seven thousand, eight hundred fifty two dollars. The solidated total, one million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred seventy seven dollars.
My apologies, I went the wrong way. All right, here we go.
Okay, the total operating expenses for Trent Court, nine hundred seventy five thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. CHI business activities, forty two thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. Ross Grant, thirty nine thousand, two hundred eighty seven dollars. New Bern Towers, eight hundred ten thousand, seven hundred ninety six dollars. Consolidated total, one million, eight hundred sixty seven thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. Total revenue and operating expenses for Trent Court, a loss of forty three thousand, two hundred sixty nine dollars. CHI business activity, a loss of forty two thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. Ross Grant, a loss of twenty three thousand, three hundred seventy two dollars. New Bern Towers, a loss of forty two thousand, nine hundred forty four dollars. The solidated loss of one hundred fifty nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Trent Court, total net income and loss, sixty two, eight, six, five thousand, two hundred eighty dollars. Being operating activity, a loss of forty two thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. Ross, a loss of twenty three thousand, three hundred seventy dollars. New Bern Towers, a loss of forty two thousand, nine hundred forty four dollars. Consolidated loss of forty three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Any questions, comments?
Well, I think we, we talked about this at the finance meeting and that we're feeling the pain of inflation and high prices like everybody else, so we're aware of it. So, any comments?
Motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the finance as presented.
Mr. Monti made the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Howell made it, seconded. Any further discussion or comments? Motion has been made. Motion has been seconded. No more discussion, no more comments. So, all in favor of the minutes of the finance report being accepted as published, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Like sign. Thank you. All opposed? Like sign. Finance report has been approved as published. Executive Director's report.
Just real quick, just for the record, that Commissioner Howell has joined the meeting and also Commissioner Blackman is on Zoom.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
All right, well, first I want to share some good news, just to say congratulations to Ms. Dee Meadows. She's our office administrator. She just completed a web program at the community college. Today was her final day, so she's finished. And then also, congratulations to Ms. Diane Richardson. She will have her mortgage burning this afternoon with Habitat, so congratulations to.
Congratulations.
At the desk, I can be.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and then last week, we celebrated Spirit Week. If you check out our Facebook page, you can see all our great pictures. We had a great week with each of friends. We do have some spirit here as an agency. As far as myself, I had a couple of meetings this week. One was with North Carolina SHPO, the state historic preservation office. We talked about the MOA between the agency, the city, and SHPO, and they have come back with some things that we need to do prior to signing that MOA, or even if we're going to do a MOA, we may have to go a different route. So, we're in discussions now with them and FEMA to decide on where we are. I had asked that they sign off on it just to allow us to be able to move forward with the environmental review to be able to demolish the units. And there's some things that they would like to see prior to that, and they're concerned about the property and the effects that it would be on the historical nature of it. And so, we're going to work through that.
But you know, the things that they're asking, what kind of time, can we put a timeframe on that?
So, they're asking us to consult with two other groups. One is the tribes and one is another agency to bring them on, to have them sign off on it too. So, I mean, it could be something that could take another couple of months. During the call, they asked me if I got what I needed out of the call, and of course, me being who I am, I was truly disappointed because this is something we've been working on since May. And then to have that call with them in November to tell us that our path needs to take another direction. So, that was like truly upsetting to me because we did put in a lot of work.
But all the time, they give you feedback and on this whole journey.
So, the feedback was very slim to none until this last letter that, that we received. And I know Mayor Odom is on the Zoom, and he also was copying on that letter. And he was on board with me as I was trying to push them to allow us to be able to sign off and then circle back on what we intend to put back. But they are holding steady until we do these other items prior to them signing off on it. So, it was very disappointing, needless to say. And then I did have another call with FEMA. They have a historic division as part of their agency. And that meeting actually went a whole lot better. They're, they're on board with helping us work with the state historic preservation office to try to get what we need so we can move forward. So, that call was, I guess, a, a better, a better call than, than the first one. So, we're gonna, we're gonna keep pushing, do whatever they ask us to do so that we can move Trent Court forward.
Tiffany, what, what is the exact historic nature that, that SHPO is concerned about?
They're concerned about what's going to go back. They're concerned about how we plan to use the, the bar release and how we plan to just redevelop the whole entire site. They talked about our green space, and even if we intended to put something back, they, they kind of recommended that we demolish and don't put anything back. But of course, you know, that's not the path that we want to take for, for the agency. So, with that being said, we have to do some more things in order to be able to build back.
What tribes? Did you say tribes?
Yes, ma'am. The land did at one point have Native Americans on it, so we need to contact the tribes to see if they have some input.
We, we had, we had to do that.
And that's new to me.
I mean, we had to do that for Craven Terrace. It's the Quataba tribe. I think it's Quataba.
Yeah, of course, back to the Lawson and.
And for Craven Terrace, they had no, nothing. In other words, they said, we have, I, I don't know how the, I saw the letter, but I don't. It's been a number of years, but they, they pretty much said, we have no concerns with this. And I would suspect that we get the same thing with Trent Court since they're so close in proximity.
There's no compromise to be made, or?
Well, I have the question, who trumps who? I mean, this is a federal agency. We are.
I think they do.
I was just saying.
I think, I think they do.
You can go against them if you want to. I'm just playing.
It's not, it's not against them. It's a funding issue, it becomes a funding issue. But it's just a shame that, I, I mean, I think the, the, the social trauma of leaving what is there on the community for this long.
And just a reminder, it's just painful.
At, at some point, that has to come into, in, into the conversation. I just, I'm, I share your frustration and a little bit of devastation at no path forward to a quicker resolution for these residents who, including myself, who, who, who walk these streets in this neighborhood and see the, the constant reminder every single day, day in and day out, with no path forward. So, I commend you on your work and I share in your frustration.
I was, I was truly devastated. I can say the least.
One thing I was putting in Tiffany's hearing, just sharing, just thinking out loud, that as we are moving forward, because a lot of times to outside, folks don't think things, nothing is happening. We just dragging our feet. And just for another level of
Transparency.
Transparency, you know, particularly Alderman, whose areas that sit in and for the leadership, like she pulled a Marion for some, for them to get some kind of feedback on what's going on. Because folk, folk could try to write a whole nother narrative because they're uninformed about what's taking place, and she busting butt, excuse my language, I'm in a meet. She, she's working hard trying to get this thing done. But other folk don't see it and not in the loop, and they're trying to create a narrative that we just dragging. But you're working hard, we know it, and your frustration, we feel it. But I just, moving forward as you get some more clarity on this path, just kind of pull some other folk into contact so they have, you know. That make sense?
Yep.
Yes.
But we're not trying to hide anything, so.
And then last, I, we had an appeal in for our office rent to continue with anti-emergency management assistance agency with the rent. And they had ended that last year this time, and so I wrote an appeal last year, and I finally got a response a year later again. And they denied us again. They denied us based on the fact that we potentially may be an essential agency to provide services to the community. They deemed that our housing operations is not an essential function. And then they also denied us based on the fact that we were in the community room with the New Bern Towers initially. And that should have been sufficient space for us to work in. But of course, you all know it's not. And I will file a second appeal based on the fact that we are essential to this community and that space that we were in initially just wasn't fit for
If you share that letter, as a community leader, I'll, I'll, I'll draft a letter in support of, of your appeal. And I would request any city, city official, sitting city officials to join me in, in, in those letters of support to say that this office is actually an essential community organization, so.
Goodness, and what about the community room for the residents?
Yeah.
Right. So, I will file a second appeal on that one. And so, onto some good news. The good news is Carolina Avenue had a closing from a construction loan to a permanent loan. And we should be receiving some development fees shortly, so I will end on that positive note.
Just want to echo Bishop Scott's words of affirmation on how much hard work you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. New Bern Towers report, Ms. Simmons?
Ms. Simmons is actually on vacation this week.
Not allowed.
Ms. Meyer is going to fill in for her.
How y'all doing today? I'm Latessa Simmons.
Oh, my goodness.
On this plan. Um, she has, well, we have a hundred and six units, ninety five occupied, twelve vacant, and eighty seven percent occupancy rates. She had two move-ins, twenty in process, and seven approved, zero move-outs. Okay, tenants accounts receivable, charged with twenty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty six dollars and sixty cents. The tar rate was ninety six percent.
That's pretty good.
Pending terminations was two for non-payment, zero for criminal, and zero for other violations. And she has zero outstanding requests on the work order.
Right.
Good job on the maintenance crew.
So, that's forty-nine received and forty-nine completed. Zero pending parts and repairs. She had nineteen police reports and zero fire reports.
Goodness.
That's good job, one there.
Any concerns on those, any concerns on those police reports? That's pretty on par with what we see month, month to month. Okay.
Ms. 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 Simmons, you done?
Yes, ma'am.
And some of those, some of those police reports are a wellness check. I mean, they come through as a.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's on par with what, with what we see month to month, but I just wanted to ask, if there's anything special.
This time, we have the Trent Court report from Ms. Meyer this time.
How y'all doing today? Um, I have an occupancy rate of eighty-nine percent. I have four move-ins, in-processes six, approved is seven. Tenant accounts receivable, twenty seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three was charged. I had a tar rate of sixty-nine percent. Pendant terminations was fourteen for non-payment, or work order is zero requests. So, thirty-two received and thirty-two was completed. For the police report was sixteen. And most of those were, where I had four that was assists, like with the ambulance, fire department. Like that, and one fire report.
Anything substantial on the unpaid balance, not, not the total unpaid balance? We, we see that continuing to rise, but this month seems in particularly high.
Yes.
Eighty-five hundred bucks.
The holidays, so a little should be going, it will be going out with the statements for this month. But encouraging them to catch up because February, we're going to start going back to court regularly. And I don't want to do that and kind of give everybody a chance, residents, to catch up, give them the resources and all of that. So, by February, I'm praying that they'll get it together.
All right. They need help, just?
We do.
Okay. Keep that in mind.
We do.
All right.
Real quick, before we begin, I just want to share one thing about the maintenance staff. As you noticed on both reports, there were no outstanding work orders, and that was one of, their goals was to get to the point where they didn't have anything once in a month without any outstanding work orders. So, I'm really proud of them. Ms. Jones and Mr. Nelson and Mr. Perry, Mr. Grimes and Mr. Cox. So, I told them I was going to call all their names out because they couldn't come today because they said that they were dirty. Because they were working today, they didn't want to come.
They were out there.
Because, so I'm just, again, very, very proud of them. That was their target to end a month with no outstanding work orders, so.
They, they ought to be commended. Now, we, we have the faith in that zero pending mean just that, because that wasn't the case before.
Right.
Oh, it wasn't.
Their numbers were being fudged and everything, but they had to be commended since they've been on board, they've been making things happen. So, I give them my gratitude.
And, and the property manager, Ms. Meyer, she confirmed that, and Ms. Simmons, so they, they did a good job.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. You done? You have anything else?
No, sir.
You, you hoping we don't have any more questions, okay?
No, no.
Okay.
Give it a head out.
And she told us, yeah. She, she told us. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Y'all have a good evening. Sorry, I have to leave.
Okay. At this point in time, we have the Ross Program Report from Ms. Huggins.
Good evening. I actually have a slideshow also, but I must ask you, we'll put it in the drive for that. I have sixty-four participants, thirty-seven non-participants. And I'm still doing the case management. And I actually had an outreach event for November the eighteenth, and that went well. That was positive, and we have a slideshow for that.
Yeah, bear with me, and we'll try to, try to stop sharing this one so I can share your slideshow, so please bear with me. Awesome. You had a good day?
Yes, we did. Had a lot of fun.
That was the best popcorn ever. Ms. Meyer makes the best popcorn.
You have any questions, anyone?
No.
No.
Great job.
No questions, um.
I'm happy to see that there are thirty-nine potential candidates who own childcare. That is so expensive, and to get it to be taken care of, that's a huge benefit.
Right.
Real quickly, before we move into the resolution piece, I said earlier, I had a comment. Of course, I just want to ask, Ms. Askew, as far as your team, when somebody's out of the loop for an extended period of time, is there any type of SOP that somebody come in to fill in, that they got something they can work from, and they not just standard operating procedure? I know housing, you got your statues and everything and that nature, but in your housing, like when, when Ms. Livingston was out for a minute, and I know y'all was dealing with somebody, is there a standard operating procedure that somebody can come in and fill in and got something to work from in each area?
So, we do have one. However, like my goal is to make sure that there's multiple people here that could use one job. Like today, Ms. Simmons wasn't here, but Ms. Meyer could fill in. And when she's not there, you know, Ms. Meyer's able to go over to her office. But we try to make sure that everyone is
Both brains.
Trained. And then if somebody's out for an extended period of time, you know, we allow them to come back. And then after that, I personally will have a meeting with them to see where they are and to see if, you know, they're able to get to where they need to be from their apps.
Okay. I had one of those military moments, you know, standard operating procedure. Because sometimes people, things happen in life, and with what we do, we can't afford a void. Somebody not being to come in and be able to keep at least some traction going, you know? And I just didn't know if you had a working document that, you know, somebody can come in like, well, at least I can do this. I know I can do this piece. Because this daily, daily thing, but okay.
Yeah, and then both programs have manuals for operations, like, like, you know, we have the commission and occupancy policy.
Right, right.
Ms. Meyer operates her program, and then Ms. Simmons has a tenant selection plan. That's how she operates her program. So, we do have documents for procedures.
And then also, with finance, how does that?
Yep, finance is a little bit different. I think some of the things that they do is from an accounting background and accounting knowledge. But as far as the ways that department operates, it operates pretty much the same as any finance department in an agency.
I can come out my military moment now. Okay, next is the resolution. You want to talk about it, Ms. Askew?
We have one resolution tonight, which is a great one. We've, we had a solicitation for a co-developer partner for Trent Court. And we received five proposals, and all five were reviewed by a committee, which consists of myself, staff, commissioners, and a city employee. We all met with each person that submitted, and they all had a Zoom interview. And then from that, we had our top two that we met in person. They came to the agency, they were able to tour the site, and we interviewed them. And also, Mr. Varner is on the call. He assisted us with this process. And from that, we have a unanimous vote of all committee members for Laurel Street to be our co-development partner. And this resolution is to allow the agency to move forward with master development agreement with Laurel Street. If you look at the resolution, there was a space for a time period. And to fill that in, it would be no later than January thirty-first to have a final approval for the master development agreement. And of course, Morgan Smith will work with the agency and with Laurel Street to develop that agreement. No, no, Mr. Vontee was on the committee. I don't know if he liked us. And Ms. Denise.
And, and Commissioner Powell was on it. It's, it's interesting how this all evolved. I don't know if it's out of school. There was one of the developers is a big. There was one of the developers is a big national, nationwide developer out of Boston. And as we were going through the Zoom meeting process, I asked them, I said, tell us what, tell me what you know about Tryon Palace. And I had a blank stare. I mean, they obviously had not, in my view. You know, so we, you know, we kind of peppered them pretty well with, with questions. The final two had Tryon Palace experience or had experience in New Bern. And they were both big time, you know, they were regional, but had done big developments throughout the state. And the Laurel Street is, interestingly enough, doing a very similar in number, five hundred and fifty-one units in Charlotte. And they really, they understood it as a process because it is a process. I know it's development, but it's a process. We probably won't see anything, architectural drawings, elevations for a year, year and a half because we have to go back. And that was one of their first questions. When, how, how old is your, and, and this is important too. They, they had CNI experience. And they wanted, and, and she asked one of the, the people who was, we were meeting with, how long has it been since your CNI planning grant? And I said, six years. And she said, we need to, we need to open that back up and we need to continue that. So it's gonna be a while before we really see anything because of the, the planning process that we have to get the citizens of Trent Court and the citizens of New Bern involved in it. And so it's, it's not something you're gonna see next week. Now, bulldozers aren't gonna be running. I can tell you, the press is gonna go out to one of our residents and pick a microphone in front of them and they're not gonna know anything. And so I think we need to, if, if this motion does carry, if we do proceed with this, we need to probably bring them up to speed as well. But, you know, it was, they did, Laurel Street did a very good job in their presentation. And including having the person who was actually gonna be in charge of it, meet with us. I mean, she was part of the group that came to New Bern.
Right.
So I, the motion is sort of in a motion because two of us commissioners were here. So I make a formal motion that we accept the resolution as been presented.
Mr. Monty made a motion, the second.
Second.
Ms. Denise, Commissioner Powell, seconded a motion. Okay, motion has been made, motion been presented. Any further discussion, questions on what we just heard? And it's great that you have put out, we got to get the citizens.
Yeah, it's a process, it's a process.
Get their buy-in. Okay. All in favor of the approval selection of a co-partner resolution? Was it Laurel?
Laurel Street.
Laurel Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that, yeah. All, all, all have voted all affirmative, there's a yes, approving the resolution. And more discussion with that. Thank you all for all of that, for the work. I got to sit in on one meeting and it was impressive what I've heard. And then I backed out and y'all did what you did. And it was great how Ms. Tiffany and Ms. Askew, you had your, your team was involved, the questions were, yeah. You know, so everybody did their homework. Thank you all for that. That's been concluded. I, I need, I need, but make a motion, can I get a motion? We're going to close.
We, I make a motion, we go into closed session to talk about personnel.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
All in favor going to a closed session?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for visiting the day.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too. The agency tonight, I move, we adjourn?
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And, right, means adjourn.
Pete and Hope.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Well, folks, we really did something. I mean, I almost feel like Moses crossing the Jordan River.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Because this is a big.
Tiffany, stop recording.